I'm not the greatest speaker, but I have passion. And I think people see that passion through me and they're like, there's something very interesting about her. And I had a friend of mine, Bob, and he's like, you just got, you got the fire in the belly kid. You just, you have it. And there is, there's a certain calling and there's a certain, I don't want to say criteria, but I've learned to not fit their mold. But I've been able to become more polished over the years. And I think it's done me really well to always just stand really, really firm in what I believe. If there's anything, I think a lot of the council and the city says, it's like, she doesn't budge. And, and I don't, unless it's something that's needed or something that could be, you know, moved around. But for the most part, when we're talking about certain topics or ideologies, it just is what it is, is black and white for me and, and that is it.
This episode is brought to you by Trident Coffee, a veteran owned brand and lifestyle. And while they're masters of cold brew, Trident's beans are roasted to create a flavor that shines whether you drink it hot or cold. There's no bitterness, there's no burnt taste, it's just good tasting coffee. Their coffees taste amazing hot, which is how I prefer it, while still designed to excel as a cold brew. But Trident Coffee is more than just great taste. Trident supports your wellness journey, featuring ingredients like organic mushrooms, adaptogens and nootropics. It's made for those who enjoy good coffee and value quality and health. So if you're looking for a coffee that meets you wherever your day takes you, hot or cold, you need to check out Trident Coffee. I know I said I prefer hot coffee, but here's a tip from me. Mix their instant cold brew with your favorite protein for a protein coffee drink that's great cold. You can thank me later. I know there's a lot of coffee options out there, but give Trident a try. I know you'll enjoy it as much as I do. Head over to tridentcoffee.com and use the promo code TDP15 for 15% off your order. That's TDP15 for 15% off your order. This episode is brought to you by Soflete, a tactical fitness company founded by special operation soldiers. Soflete is dedicated to helping you achieve a healthy lifestyle. From expertly crafted training programs to high quality proteins, pre workouts and sleep and recovery supplements. They've got everything you need to power through your day. Soflete also has a full line of clothing. They have you covered from shorts to cold weather gear. Embracing the motto die living, Soflete inspires us all to embrace life with vigor and resilience. So take the first step towards a healthier you. Visit Soflete.com, that's S O F L E T E dot com and use the promo code TDP2024 to get 20% off your order. Again, that's TDP2024 for 20% off your order. Hey everybody, welcome back. My guest this time has an interesting life journey. From her time in high school and choosing a unique sports choice to starting out going to college, but realizing that that really wasn't her lifestyle, but the Marine Corps was. To leaving the Marine Corps and then following a lifelong dream of law enforcement and joining the NYPD. But then love happened and she followed her husband, a marine to California where he was stationed at Camp Pendleton. She's since owned her own health and fitness training company. Today she is the manager of a birth choice centers. And for me, it was interesting to learn that it's a facility or a business that provides education and training to people starting their journey into pregnancy and becoming parents. Actually, the first time I'd ever heard of one. In addition to that, she's been a councilwoman for the city of Temecula and she's currently campaigning for her second term. This was a fun and interesting conversation. I know you're gonna like it, so let's get into it. Here's episode 167 with Jessica Alexander. What are you gonna talk about? You're on a podcast.
Talk about you.
Let's give everybody the whole Jessica tour.
All right.
Let's go way, 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 way back. Little, little, little Jessica.
Okay.
Where's hometown? Where were you born? Where'd you grow up? All that kind of stuff.
Absolutely. So I first started out, I was born in New York.
Part of New York?
Long Island. So Long Island area.
Queens.
Queens yourself. Okay. So for myself, it was Long Island.
Okay.
And ended up growing up there and then yeah, just kept going.
Big family, small family?
Very weird family.
Okay.
And I hope they're not listening. No, but um.
What's your definition of weird?
Well, everybody's got a weird family. So I actually have, I'm an only child from my parents. And, but I have six brothers and sisters.
From there getting remarried?
Everybody had three marriages on both sides.
Got it.
So I'm, I'm kind of very special in that sense. I was the only child from that marriage, but I have tons of siblings. So yeah, yeah. So that's, that's how I started out.
How young were you when your biological mom and dad got divorced?
Um, really young. I would probably say about one or two years old. So I was pretty young. Uh, and then my mom remarried sometime around when I was about five. So it was a great guy. His name is Jeff, my dad at this point. He's always raised me. And he actually, at the time, he was a resident at a hospital. Worked his way up to become and get through, become a doctor. So uh, me and my mom, we started out, uh, she was a single mom for a long time. Did everything she could to kind of get through, you know, it was, uh, wasn't easy. Uh, one of the things I think that sticks out on my mind the most all the time is she says, she'll never forget when she went into the social security line. And she, I was in the stroller and she says, I turned around and said, I will never go back. And now you're gonna make me cry. I just started. This is normal, isn't it?
I'm just sitting here listening and you're, and you're starting to cry.
So exciting.
But I get blamed for it.
Yes, well, it is. You know, anyways, it's exciting because I look at where my mom was, like her strength. And like, I'm like, wow, like I got to feed off that and learn off that growing up. So, um, so yeah, it's pretty exciting. I'm, I'm gonna start crying now. Thank you so much. Hopefully the camera's on you. That's awesome.
I would say that the, the benefit of having somebody powerful like that in your life.
Yeah.
You know, really kind of sets the, the compass point for you from a very young age.
Hundred percent.
And a lot of the guests that I've had who either their entire life, or there was a period of life where it was them and their single mom.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is. I don't know their, people sometimes call it the mama bear.
Hmm. Yes.
Men, it's just a given. You're, you're the provider. You go get the job. But women, when they're, especially when they're forced into that role, they seem to, to gain this level, this next level of perseverance and determination. And by osmosis, the kids that come from those women become just that much stronger.
Absolutely.
It, it's just, it's a weird thing that I've been able to experience in talking to several guests who are children who grew up with a single mom and mom worked three or four jobs and they learned this incredible work ethic and never give up.
Absolutely. And it was, it was a determination that I always had since I was little. So I think it was, it's really helped me along the way to get me to the point where I am here with everything I've had to deal with. And um, yeah, it's just an incredible, incredible journey that we're gonna get into.
Did you primarily live with mom then?
Uh, I did. I only lived with my mom and I had my grandma there, but really wasn't there. Uh, she was, she had her own family that she was still raising at the time. Um, and so when my mom met my dad, it took him a couple of years and then they ended up getting married. So it was probably about five years old when they ended up getting married and uh, yeah, it wasn't until another almost five years until they had their first kid. So I was kind of that single kid for a while and unfortunately I went through a lot of abuse growing up. But it was what it was, you know, I, I always look at things such as, you know, I'm not the victim, I'm a victor. And so uh, it taught me a lot. I grew a lot through it. Um, and so yeah, so uh, it was, but yet at the same time, now me and my mom have wonderful and my parents and I have an incredible relationship, you know, we've been able to grow and forgiveness and uh, lot has come through it. It's been incredible. So I'm just very grateful.
Was your mom from the city, New York, Long Island herself or did her marriage take?
All, all in about Smithtown area. And then we moved around in like Wantagh and Farmingdale area. Uh, so that's kind of where we were located. And then afterwards we moved to Michigan. So we were in East Lansing for, how old was I? About sixth grade when I moved from there to Michigan. And um, I was there till I was 18. And then I ended up going to the military. I had college and then military after that. So yeah.
What took up your time as a, as a young girl? What were you interested in?
It's like sports. I was a sports freak. I loved, I, I actually soccer was my passion. I was on the men's wrestling team. I loved wrestling. So I wrestled for several years. Weightlifting was huge for me.
A bit sexist, but what year did you graduate high school and what years were you on the men's wrestling team? Because we're not talking 2024 where it's a little more common for girls to be doing what have been traditionally male sports.
Absolutely. No, that's a great question. Actually, I was only, I was the second female to ever have wrestled on the wrestling team in Michigan. The first female, I'll never forget, her name is Lauren Wolf. She, uh, she was a beast, I'll tell you. She had all, she had all brothers. I think she was like one of seven or something. She had a large family and all of her brothers wrestled and she was the only sister. So um, it's pretty big for her. And then she did one year and then the following year because I was lifting and I was just, I just fell in love with lift, like working out, lifting. And then I just found this passion of just um, of wrestling in itself. And I'm like, well, I'll be the only female on there. I don't care. And I was always that tomboy type of girl, you know, I, I could get dressed up when I needed to, but I'll get dirty and, and just have fun and enjoy as a young kid. And uh, so that's, I just had a passion for it and I got really good at it.
Where does, where does it? The, the junction point or the tip off, step off point from soccer, which I understand there's a fitness component and that you probably had some time in the weight room related to that, to actually weightlifting and then let me try wrestling. How does that?
Okay. So let me take it to my freshman year. So um, my freshman year, I started out cheerleading, actually. Don't, don't, don't critique me for it. It was cheerleading was different back then from what I think it is today. It was a, was a whole different thing. It was a lot softer than today. I look at some of these girls and they're hardcore. I will say that. But back then I did about, about a season of cheerleading. It was fun, but it just wasn't, it wasn't it for me. I'll never forget, I was passing by the gym and uh, this, this young guy, he was a junior in high school. His name was Jeff Gergen. He was like the school heavyweight lifter type thing or all it. And I walked by and I peeked through and he's like, why don't you come on in? And he's like, let me teach you. So me and my friend went in and I fell in love. It was just like all of a sudden, just this passion that I just loved lifting. I was in there every day. Uh, and then just probably within a couple of weeks or a couple of months, that next season of, for winter is when, you know, just hanging around the guys, I wasn't around the girls for um, what was it? For cheerleading. I was around all the guys realistically and they're like, hey, you know, let's tell you about wrestling. And I just got just hooked right into it my freshman year.
Were you drawn into bro lifting or like Olympic lifting, powerlifting?
It was just honestly to start was just regular lifting. Let me see. And then I started just getting stronger and stronger. I finally, with my husband, I mean, this is later on, but I, I end up benching, my bench was like 265 and.
Damn.
Yeah. So um, it was, I, I look back now, I'm like, I really could have done something with it, but uh, I just loved it. It was just a passion. And uh, so yeah, yeah.
So coming to the end of high school was, could you have wrestled as a female in college at that point?
That's a good question. So I did my freshman year and then they stopped having wrestling for two years. And I had asked my parents, I'll never forget, I was like, I want to get back into wrestling. I was like, can we switch schools so I can get back on the team? So I was in uh, a private school at the time, and then I moved into a public school and then got right on the team. And I loved it. It was even better because I had a better coach, to be honest with you. It's just a great team. And I finished up, I wasn't looking to do college with it, to be honest with you. It wasn't just, it was just something I was enjoying. But during my summertime, I'd actually go to MSU, so Michigan State University, and I'd wrestle with the guys on the team over there. So they'd have me come over and just get on the mat and just wrestle. And so yeah, it was pretty fun.
Cause from the flip side of that, it's not being that anomaly that one of the few two females in the country wrestling.
Well, it was in the state. I don't know, I don't know if it was any further out, but I know at least Michigan wide, it was just the two of us.
But it still didn't draw enough attention that recruiters were coming looking for you from whatever college.
It was, it was in, and this was in 93. So this was still very, we made the papers, like it was the big thing. Cause we were actually, they got us both on the mat together, which was even better. So that was like the big thing. And yeah, she pinned me. It was, it was awesome. It was totally good. Had complete respect for her. So yeah, it was, it was really good. So she got into, you know, Greco Roman and all that. I started it. I just, I liked getting on the mat. So that was kind of my thing. So yeah.
So then what were your plans, goals for going into college?
So during uh, the time that I had those two years off for wrestling, um, I was doing a lot of soccer. So I was defense goalie. It was a big thing for me, still in the gym. I, I, from the time I hit 13, I never stopped going in the gym up until a few years ago with a, with an injury. Uh, just hardcore, you know, five, six days a week. But during that time I was doing a lot of soccer and then I planned on going to college to play. And then I had an accident. So I actually um, destroyed my ankle. So they had to do full ligament reconstruction.
On the field?
Yeah. So it was, and it was during practice. It wasn't even during like a really good game or something, you know?
Of course not.
I was like against my friend. I'm like, really? Of all people? So um, I had to get full ligament reconstruction done. And wow, yeah, it was, it was pretty nasty. And the doctor was like, if you ever play again and jack up that ankle, you will never walk. So I was like, okay, so maybe that's done. Uh, so that was kind of it for, for that. And then I just got, I was a big, big into running after that. Still, I was, I always loved running, uh, running and lifting were like my two big things. And then ended up going into the military after that. So.
Prior to that injury though, did you have a college or colleges in mind that you were looking at that?
I was still too young. I was, I was, it was my sophomore year. So it was between my sophomore and junior, maybe it was my junior year. It was my junior year because I was just about to start looking at that point in time. Well, my head wasn't in college. I was like, I just wanted to play. I wanted to have fun and enjoy. And I just wasn't there yet. I, you know, I think we were just talking, you know, when we were talking before, I wasn't that top student. I struggled through school. I had, I was labeled with dyslexia, learning disabilities, ADD, you name it. I had those letters after my name. So for me, um, I always wanted to go into law enforcement. That was, I remember since second grade, that was one of my biggest things. I, I had a, I had to interview a detective. And so I interviewed a detective and the light bulb came on and it's like, I want to do this for the rest of my life. And I remember as a kid, I'd always watch cops and highway patrol. Every night till like 10 o'clock at night, you know, I'd be in my bed watching it. It was just the thing I did. And I loved, loved law enforcement. So that really for me, that was where my mind was going. And you don't, at that time you didn't need college. It was great. Maybe a little pay bump, but you didn't have to have it. Just that high school degree at that time. So.
Was college then something to basically fill the gap between your graduating high school and being old enough to be a cop?
So at that time, what I actually ended up doing, so I graduated high school and I went into, I wanted to actually try college out, see how I did. Cause again, I wasn't the greatest student. Probably because I wasn't applying myself either all the time, right? So I ended up going into community college uh, to do um, criminal justice for a major. And I did about six months. I was living on my own. I was living with some people that I worked with, about six college students who all they did was party. And I got to the point where I was like, this is not what I want.
Where were you going to college at?
Uh, I was just like one of, I'm trying to think of the one of the, it was one of the local community colleges.
Still in Michigan though?
Yeah, I was still in Michigan. It was just, I moved out from my mom's house, probably about 10 minutes from her. I wanted to have the college experience, you know, and I can do it on my own. So I was working as a waitress, going to school. But I was looking at the lifestyle of these people and they were all going to MSU and all this. I'm like, I just don't want to be like that. This is not, I'm not going to get anywhere. And they were partying and drinking and not, not that I didn't have my time and enjoyment, but it was over the top. So um, when I was back in high school, I did have the marine recruiter come several times. Went actually to my wrestling matches at that time, my senior year. And was trying to recruit, recruit me. And I was like, no, I'm good. I'm, I'm good. And so finally I think I hit that point where I was like, I gotta do something. I have to get out of Michigan. I have to change and get out of everything. And so that's why I'm going to the Marine Corps.
So you didn't actually finish up your college career?
Not at that point in time. Yeah, not at that time. So I just did like six months. Uh, and then that was it. And then I, once I got my credits, I, I left and went right into the Marine Corps.
Any service in your family, law enforcement or military?
Um, my dad, my, my biological dad did, but I didn't really know him that well. And then my step grandfather, but there wasn't much relationship. I think it was just, it was the passion of not only serving my country, but again, I thought, I, I enjoy like the physical activity. I enjoyed um, all of that perspective of guns and all, I just, I just did. And so I had an opportunity where I was like, well, I can get out of the country. I can travel. I can educate myself. And I could be doing a great service for my country as well. And uh, so I just left and that was it. I went to, I went to bootcamp. And after bootcamp, I ended up having the wish list that they give you.
Let me back you up real quick. Did you look at any of the other branches?
Nope.
Just Marine Corps?
I was like, I'm gonna do it, do it big, you know? So I, Marine Corps was it for me. I, I thought about it, but I was like, no. I was the only marine in my family though.
What was, most importantly, what was mom's response to you saying, I'm joining the Marine Corps?
Oh, she loved it. She actually, she, she would always tell me that um, when I was, or when she was younger, she wanted to go into the army and she wanted to do nursing. And so she went through a big process of it and then ended up going to, you know, right to the point to where she was about to leave. And then I don't remember what it was, but she didn't go. So I don't know if she backed off, something happened, but it just wasn't in the cards for her.
Now, not being a good student, you, in hindsight, kind of looking back, probably a lot of it was just application on your part.
But yes and no. I really did struggle. I gotta tell you, I so struggled with reading. So you know, for what would, you know, somebody could read right through would be so challenging for me. So I had to work, I was in the resource room for a while. I'll never forget sixth grade. And just teaching me ways to apply myself, teaching me ways to study, teaching me ways to read that maybe not everybody else does. Or I would have to get my textbook on audio to be able to just sit there and read and listen and, and absorb. So still today, sometimes what takes people an hour will take me 10. But to have that drive to put that 10 in no matter what, that to me has grown me exponentially in what I'm able to, what I've been able to do. So.
Completely side note, and thinking about now, you mentioned audiobooks, but and I don't ask this question to, to try to be mean or anything. Are you somebody who enjoy, like, did you get to a point where you enjoy reading? Or does the struggle with reading prevent you from ever getting to where I just want to sit and read a book?
I got to a point in my life where I actually loved reading and then I had kids. And then time went out the window. Um, I, when I lived.
You don't want to read at two o'clock in the morning?
No. Actually, I'm reading my emails from the city at two o'clock in the morning typically, and I'm sending emails out. Um, but yeah, I do a lot of reading just in general. Um, just with the stuff that comes in and I'm very, I'm just an audible learner though, too. A visual, hands-on, just how I learn and I learn so much quicker in that way. Um, I know some people like uh, you know, my sister, for example, she's such a great reader. She can pick it up one, two, three in a book. But um, I'm that way, hands-on, again, you know, listening and seeing it. So. So anyway, so I've learned to be able to have little tricks along the way to get me through it, you know, the academy. Um, any of my schooling for the military, we still had to read stuff, you know, but uh, like I said, sometimes I just have to be up till two, three in the morning and just studying and working.
How'd you do on the ASVAB?
I don't know. Like, like average, normal. Um, math wasn't my strongest either. Like, I'm telling you, I just, it's all okay though. Uh, we all have our strong points. So I actually ended up going in open contract. So I wanted to go in military police.
People listening right now are cringing like open contract.
I know. But you know what it is? I, I didn't care because I just wanted to go in. I, again, I wanted to go in military police. That was my thing. And they're like, oh, you're too short. So we can't let you go in military police. So what you can do is, is you can go in and um, and you can apply when you're back in and get a waiver. Stupid me. I didn't know. I'm like, okay. So you know, so just put, sign the.
Recruiters don't lie.
No, they're wonderful. But I wanted to go in and uh, so I actually became, they put me in as an ammunition technician initially. And so that's.
Paris Island?
Yes. Yeah.
What was that experience like for you?
It was so much fun. I'm not a normal person.
I, I'm picturing, I'm picturing day one on the yellow feet and you're the one standing there grinning like a Cheshire cat.
I love, I just loved it. Um, it's just all day. I got to work out and get paid for it. Let's be real. You know, people wish that they could do that. So I got that for three months.
Never a point where you're like, oh man, I made the wrong decision?
Never. There was never. Now I will tell you, there's a breaking point because that's the whole thing. They need to break you in order to build you back up. Oh gosh, I'll never forget. I had this one drill instructor and they all had these claws and just these faces. I'll never forget. And she was, we were on the prey deck and I was, I was holding my rifle. We were just, you know, at, at position and you can't move and it's hot and the bugs are on you. It's horrible. And all of a sudden she's screaming in my face and all of a sudden a tear came down and I'm like, oh, she got me. Like seriously? That was it. That was my, I'll never forget. That was my breaking point in the Marine Corps. So uh, it was, it was just, it was so awesome. We had great girls in there, you know, we just uh, we taught each other a lot. I just had fun. I don't even know how to explain. I had a lot of fun in bootcamp and learned a lot. So.
Where's your first duty station?
So I had my wish list and I chose, my first thing was to go overseas. So you don't know where you're gonna go. I don't remember my last two, but normally if you ask to go overseas, you go. So I actually got stationed initially, it was in Okinawa in Japan. And that lasted a week and then they shipped me over to um, Camp Fuji.
What year is this?
Ninety, 98? Yeah, 98. I ended up going in 98. So um, so I went there and then there was only about 200 Marines. There is a very small base. We were right on camp or Mount Fuji. So Mount Fuji was our backyard. It was our playground. So it was pretty neat. Just real interesting to be overseas. I spent pretty much my entire, I spent my entire time overseas uh, in the military. I never wanted to come back to the States. Not that I didn't love the States, but I love being overseas and learning culture. So uh, you know, we'd go to Tokyo and we'd go travel and just do and see different things and uh, you know, just different activities out there that we could do. So.
Now you've already mentioned that your lifelong vision had been to be a cop and dreamed of wanting to be a cop. You went in wanting to be an MP. Before we get down that aspect, were you thinking that one enlistment and I'm out early on?
I didn't know. I, I just wanted to get in and see what it was like. When I got in, I was like, I'm gonna be a lifer. That was, I, I felt it. I wanted it. I loved it. Uh, again, well, obviously I didn't, but you know, I mean, I loved it, but it was just things changed. Uh, season changed. But I just had the passion from the Marine Corps. I love the Marine Corps. I love being part of a brother and sisterhood. Always being able to rely on one another, be able to travel, um, serve. I just, I just, everything was wonderful about it. So you know, of course you have your good and bad experiences, but overall it was fantastic.
Did you try to put in for the MP waiver?
No, I actually did, got to do something even better. So uh, so I started off in that as an ammo tech. And I'll never forget, I was in the ammunition supply point. And so I used to work in the bunkers. And uh, I couldn't stand it because you'd be counting bullets all day. I'm like, this is horrible. But you gotta do your, you do your time. And after a couple of months of being down at the ASP, they brought me up into um, just basically the office area. So I got to do a lot of, you know, just office work, learning things, which really helped me along the way in other aspects too, as, as my career went on. But um, I had a.
Was it an admin component still related to munitions?
Yes, it was the same thing. So I still was an ammo, I mean, uh, ammo tech. I'd still go down to the ASP, but I wasn't counting bullets all day. I was actually, you know, bringing, I was making sure that everything was coming in and out, making sure we're getting the right supplies. It was, it was basically supply for ammo is really what it was. Uh, but I had a staff sergeant come in and it's hardcore, salty dog, love the guy. And he actually ended up telling me about marine security guards. And he knew I always wanted to be an MP. So he said, why don't you try out? You'd be amazing at it. I'm like, I don't even know what it is. So we talked about it. So sign up, hurry up, because right now you, you need to put your application and your information uh, to see if you can get in. So I did and I got in. So uh, not many people usually make it through uh, training. Like the attention, the retention rate is horrible. It's very low. Um, but I made it. So it was really good. It was several months long. But basically what it got me to the point was, is I.
Where was that training at?
That was in Quantico in Virginia. So we were there for a couple of months and uh, we ended up going through all of the security uh, for the embassies. So that's basically where I ended up going after that. To be able to, you know, guard everything from equipment to personnel. Ambassadors, we had presidents, we had, you name it, anybody or any, anything that came in, we had to protect it. That was, that was our home base. So.
The little bit that I've learned of or, or knew of MSGs. I thought it was like male six foot tall was the minimum requirement. Oh, okay.
No, no. The only thing that I know for requirement truly is, is uh, what was it? Like the drill, what is it? The, the, what is it? They call it um, the rifle guys out on the field.
Oh, the, the um, silent.
Silent drill field or silent drill team. There we go. Yeah, that's kind of it. Other than that, if you can hold your own weight, there's, they don't, you know, if you're male or female, they don't have any.
Remove this just a little bit.
No, you're good. Um, you know, they don't have any restrictions or anything. If you can do it, do it. If not, well, peace out. See you later. So uh, yeah.
How did that experience? Well, were you one of the only women or were there other women in your training group?
There was, but not many. There was very few. So I was one of very few during that, during that time.
And how did that experience compare to bootcamp for you?
It was like next, total next level. So we had uh, obviously during uh, the Marine Corps, we had yellow footprints, we had bootcamp and then we went to what's called Marine Combat Training, MCT. And that was basically live in the field for two weeks and that was fun. And then again, later on it was, you know, marine security guards. So it was all that training. And then you head out and they send you out from there. So and one thing I loved about it is it was constant training. You know, sometimes you get to these uh, these posts or whatnot and I mean, there's training along, but we continuously trained and trained and trained because we had to make sure that we can clear embassies and we can do different drills and things like that. You know, we had CIA there, we had FBI there, we had everybody. And so we just had a lot of contact, learned a lot while I was there. Uh, just really, really good um, for me to continue to just grow during that time. So.
Isn't the marine helicopter crew that flies the president, isn't that component or a component of the marine security guard?
That's a different component. Yeah. So they're the ones who will come in typically and they will, there's, there's, there's a group that comes in and they will land on the embassy. They're pulling people out. You know, you have all different bits of it. Uh, I had contact with, it was, we were securing President Bush and Colin Powell at the time and who else? And then Clinton had come at one point in time too. So those were the two presidents that we had some time with.
And how many embassies did you end up working at?
Two, two. Well, two I was stationed at. So I started out at uh, New Delhi, India. And so I was there for, let me see, about 15 months. And then the next one I was over at uh, Madrid, Spain. But in between there, I had been to uh, Israel as well. So at the time, when it was just a consulate, I was over there and that's when I actually was with uh, Colin Powell and uh, the president. But in between there, I had been to, uh, Israel as well. So at the time when it was just a consulate, I was over there and that's when I actually was with, uh, Colin Powell and, uh, the president.
Now, within that unit, are you rotating frequently or do they like to try to lock you into a given location?
No, I'll keep you at that location. So typical minimum is usually about 15 months for at least back then for marine security guard. But, cause you, you gotta learn your embassy. You want to know the ins and outs, nooks and crannies of every single toggle switch of every single light that goes on and off. You want to have that, like, everything known so well. So, yeah, it was, I, I loved being over there. Uh, had some crazy experiences, you know, here and there. Uh, if I could share this, this is actually pretty cool. I'll never forget. It was in New Delhi, India, and I'll, I'll, I'll never forget. Everybody went home. It was just me at the embassy. And obviously the Marines were just a phone call away. So, you know, you give them a call, hey, we got something going on. So all of a sudden this, uh, this alarm goes off and it was in the CIA area. Everybody's gone from that area. I don't know what the heck's going on.
Just turn that off.
Don't worry about it. So called up my guys. I'm like, hey, I'm going to go check this out. And I go up there. I'll never forget moving up there. And all of a sudden the lights on and there's a, like a shadow moving back and forth. And I'm on the, I was scared, petrified. Um.
They don't call them spooks for no reason.
I was like, so I run back down and, uh, no, actually no, before I ran back down, all of a sudden now the door starts to open and I'm standing around. So obviously hands on my, I'm ready to pull it, pull it out. And all of a sudden this guy jumps out who I knew. I'm like, what are you, what are you doing here? You're not supposed to be here. He's like, I thought I signed in. I'm like, I guess you didn't or whatever. But either way, it was just, that was like one of the scariest times I've ever had while I was in, uh, embassy duty. Just again, by yourself, might be pulling your piece out. You don't know who's behind that door that shouldn't be there. It's obviously not a mouse going back and forth. Cause that was, sometimes we'd have animals and critters in there. We'd always have to be careful of, but that was obviously not the case. So, so, yeah. So.
Now, is this all during your second enlistment?
Uh, no. So I've only had one enlistment. So I started out as a, um, uh, what was it? Four and a half years. And later on I had actually gone into the reserves to do two years and it got condensed down to six months. So that was later on. I ended up going in after, after my second marriage. So.
So with the love of the Marine Corps and love in everything you were doing, what was the catalyst then to not stay in and not re-enlist?
Absolutely. So my second duty station was Madrid, Spain. And again, you know, working embassy duty at night, had a lot of free time. So I started learning Spanish. It's like, well, I'm in, I'm here. Let me start learning so I can understand what I'm talking to people. Um, I ended up meeting a lot of friends and people out there. So I want to make sure I can, you know, enjoy myself. Well, all of a sudden it was kind of that time where, uh, I had to decide, am I going back to the States? Or do I want to get out and maybe go to college and maybe do something like FBI or DEA? That was kind of my next, my next thought. So when I started looking at becoming an agent, one of the things that they had stated is, is well, you need to have a degree. And criminal justice, I don't believe, criminal justice was not on that list, but one of them was, uh, foreign language. So I was like, well, I've been here. I've been studying. Why not? I'll try it. And why go back to the States to learn something? When I could just continue to immerse myself into the language and the culture. So I actually ended up getting out over there at Rota Spain, uh, and then getting an apartment and just staying there, went to college, uh, for a couple of years. I think I was there for about three years after that. And, uh, then it got to the point where to get my degree, they said, well, we can't finalize you here at college because we don't have all the classes here. Uh, it was Suffolk University over there in, in, uh, in Madrid, Spain. I said, well, you can stay here. And then the following year you can finalize your degree. And I was like, no, I want to get this done. But at the time I was engaged and so I was with a gentleman, uh, for about a year. He was a Spaniard, great guy. And ended up, um, having to make a decision. Do I go back to the States? I'm, you know, engaged. So we ended up going back and, uh, I went and finished up my four year, my four year degree in Spanish over there at Suffolk University in Boston. So that's where I ended up going after that.
And was the plan to stay then in Boston or were you thinking?
No, I loved Boston. Boston was really nice too. It was a great city. No, I still wanted to pursue going all the way back to law enforcement. So while we were there, I had, uh, we ended up having my oldest daughter, uh, Samantha. And I was actually doing personal training at the time. No, no, I wasn't doing personal. I was doing, teaching classes, like fitness classes and spin classes, which I got certified back in Spain to do. Uh, and during that time I just, I was able to make a really good living. And my husband at the time ended up teaching. So he was teaching Spanish at a private school. And so I still had the passion, the desire after having her to get back into or wanting to get into law enforcement. And so I put my package in for a New York City Police Department, started doing the bus trips back and forth. And, uh, once my last interview went through, got the application or, you know, the, the letter back and they said, yep, you're hired. So I had to go through that whole process and we moved and, and I'm going to New York after that.
Taking you back just a little bit though, when you asked out.
Yeah.
How was it for you making that transition? And once you were back to being a civilian, how did you? I don't want to say like or dislike it, but how was that transition for you?
Okay. It was, it was okay. Cause I think I just, I knew what I wanted and I still had that mindset of law enforcement or DEA, something along those lines. So my, my head was still there. And I had, uh, later on, I had done so many things. I thought about for a point, do I go even as an officer, uh, in the military and.
Circling back after your degree?
Yeah. It was, I thought about it and it just wasn't something I'm like, no, didn't want to do that. So, um, I just ended up continuing to just try to get my degree finished and stay focused on that. Uh, so I can just kind of raise up to that next level. So.
Now, why NYPD as opposed to any of the federal agencies?
Why not NYPD? Come on now. No, it was.
Cause LAPD wasn't hiring?
Well, okay. So this is really interesting. I had promised myself when I was younger, my, my stepfather's actually from California. And we'd come out and visit my grandparents. I was like, I would never move to California. They're from, um, like the Beverly Hills area and just wasn't my cup of tea. And so I was like, I would never move to California. I thought all of California was like that. And so, um, yeah.
Just like everybody thinks all of New York is like Manhattan.
That's exactly it. And so, uh, yeah, just, uh, I came back here, but anyways, um, where we go.
I'm glad you decided never to come to California.
I love California. I know, right? It was kind of a calling to come here. I was getting forced to do it. So we ended up, uh, going into the police department. And, uh, over in New York, we went, I ended up going through the academy. Uh, we ended up having an apartment. It was a.
What year did you go to the academy?
Let me see. I got out. Wow. My years are so, hold on. Eight or oh two, was it oh three, oh four, somewhere around there. So I was only in for a couple of years, uh, in the police department. And, uh, yeah, and then my, my current husband right now suckered me into coming to California many, many, many years ago.
Where I'm going with it is you had nine 11 in between that, obviously New York.
I was in the, actually at that point in time, I was still in the embassy. So, yeah, was I? Yep. I was still in embassy duty at that time, right? Yeah. Yeah. Two thousand and one. Yeah. So I was still at the embassy. I was in Spain at that time.
Where I'm going with it is that wasn't enough of a catalyst to then keep you in or vice versa. No hesitation of like, New York City was like grounds, no pun intended, ground zero for the. Do I, do I want to step back into this? Why not look in Boston or some other organization?
I will ta, I looked into Washington DC. That was one. Cause I knew I wanted to work in a city. If I was going to do it, I want to have fun. I want to enjoy myself.
Just not LA.
Just not LA. That came later. So, uh, I was looking at Washington DC. I was talking to the recruiter over there and I'll never forget. They said, we only have one radio per two police officers. I was like, no, thank you. Like what do you, what do you do? You know, if you get separated, you're basically stranded by yourself. So exactly. You know, so, uh, anyway, so I got to the.
Separated.
Exactly. That's exactly it. Smoke signals, you know, whatever works. Um.
Or you learned to yell real loud.
Loud. So I ended up, uh, not going there, but I, again, remember I said, when I was in New York, just one of those things growing up. I just wanted to be a cop in New York. Uh, so that was, that was my calling since I was in second grade.
How was the academy compared to having been in the Marine Corps?
I really did. I, I loved it. I, uh, I was one of the leaders there, uh, of, of the team. And so, um, I had a lot of experience because of the military. So that really gave me, uh, like that leg up comparison to everybody else. It really, it was great. I already knew a lot of the drills. I knew all that stuff. I mean, to keep my uniform squared away. All that was simple. You know, it's just for me at that time, the only real big challenge was having to go through the academy and the education point of reading everything. So what I would have to do is literally get up super early in the morning, go to the academy all day. And then they had, um, they had extra help after and I would just stay all day until all at night to make sure I can retain the information. They'd go over it again. I wouldn't be leaving usually till about seven o'clock at night at least, and then do it all over again the next morning.
Now, for those who aren't familiar with the city, the island's not NYPD.
No.
There are a bunch of city, individual city agencies, sheriff's departments, all kinds.
Yes.
What was your knowledge of the city coming on as a NYPD officer?
When you say not of which part of the city?
That's what I'm getting at. Cause where I was going to follow up with was when you create your wish list for what station house you want to go to.
Yeah.
How did that impact it?
Oh, I just, just walked in. I just walked in. Same thing as kind of with the Marines, you know, just open contract. And it's just, that's just how I am. I just, I've always had that opportunity to just get in really good positions. But I always work hard when I'm in. So it didn't matter where I went. The only difference that we, I did get to pick is if I wanted to be, um, on the street in transit. And there was another one. I can't remember right now or in the jails. And I didn't want to do either transit or in the jails. I was like, please no. And I, so I was, you know, I was just, uh, just roving. So it was good.
Where was your first station house?
Seventy eight, seventy eight was my, was my place. That was where I started and where I finished. Yeah.
How was that experience for you? Where I'm, so my knowledge of law enforcement is so driven by driving around in black and white. But isn't NYPD more foot based than car based?
It is, especially if you're a rookie, especially if you're a rookie. So I started out obviously on foot. Oh no, let's, let's even reverse back. So my first time in a squad car with some other cops, I was actually with a group of detectives. And, uh, they put some of us on a uniform. I'll never forget. It was our first arrest was for a bag of peanuts. So guy gets, we get called up, we get it. We go into one of the stores and like, oh, this guy stole something, some old guy. So the detective's like chasing him down, takes him down and it's over a bag of peanuts. And so I was like, lesson one. Careful who you're taking down, you know? It was just, just weird things like that. But, uh, that was our first experience out on the street. But I was in cars pretty quickly. Uh, but if you were on foot patrol, you're on foot patrol, you know, especially in New York when it's freezing cold. You just learn where to go and where to warm up and what to wear while you're out there.
Did you have career aspirations at that point?
Yes. Yeah. At that point, I, again, it was since I was second grade.
No, what I'm getting at is what did you want to do in your career?
I want to be, I'm a detective because that was one of those things you just kind of stayed in there. It was like either sergeant or detective and you kind of split either way. And I always want to become a detective. Uh, I was on in route. You had to have so many arrests in order to be able to even get looked at. And I was building up pretty quick. Um, I really worked hard. I put the overtime in. That was the, even though, and at that time I was a single mom. So for me, it was just having to, um, you know, juggle, have being a single mom and a job as a police officer. And you know, I mean, you don't know if you're going to be called in for a couple of days. You don't know if you're going to have to go to court the next day. So I was just blessed with having the opportunity to have this lady who, uh, end up, uh, watching my daughter. And so if I had to stay the night, whatever, she's like, go ahead. No big deal. So I just give her a call and she'd take her. So it was really great relationship we had with her and her family. So.
Whereabouts in the city were you living in relation to where you were working out of?
So I was in, let me try to think. So I was, I was still in Brooklyn. It was, it just kind of depended if I took the train or if I drove in. You know, still either way, maybe 20, 25 minutes, 30 minutes, sometimes of traffic and same on the train. So.
And for you guys, all of your cases are, so you're working out of Brooklyn. All of your cases and court appearances are in Brooklyn, right?
Yes. Yeah. The, uh, the courthouse was just a walk away from, uh, our, um.
Station house?
Station. Yeah.
Did I read somewhere that you rode motors for a while?
I did. Yeah. So they, I got trained to ride motors. And so it was pretty cool because I'd be able, it wasn't with the motorcycle team. But you'd be able to ride motorcycles just in general, uh, just as a police officer. So for instance, if we had parades or we had just details, just even around, just to make sure we can have like kind of one person.
So it wasn't a duty assignment?
It wasn't a duty assignment. I just had the opportunity to ride motorcycles, NYPD police or NYPD motorcycles with them. So it was good, but I didn't have the detail. So I still had the ability to have the flexibility, but not be toggled down to traffic and all that other stuff, which is phenomenal. So if any of my guys needed something, I'd come up, I'd like, hey, you need anything? And we even had, um, like these little, it looked like a rickshaw. It was kind of like one of those things. So I have the opportunity because I had the license to ride one of those. So when it's freezing out, I'd go ride around, grab some of my guys on foot patrol, come on and warm up. Here's some coffee. And we just, just, you know, you know how it is. So it gave me a lot of, uh, flexibility to do things and just kind of be all around the area. So.
Now you've already mentioned that marriage kind of forced you to rethink your career. So how many total years were you able to do NYPD?
So just about a little over two years. So right about two years. And so when I planned on, well, my husband right now, my current husband, we actually knew each other from the Marine Corps. So we were best friends, workout partners, like lifted every day together. And it was interesting because a year to the day that me and my ex ended up splitting completely. My husband called me literally a year to the day. And, uh, at that point, there was about a couple of months from December to February. We were just talking all the time, getting connected again. And then he's like, hey, why don't you come out and visit for my birthday? And I was like, that'd be great, but I'm a single mom and I don't have any money. He's like, no, you and your daughter bring her out. I'll pay for both of you guys to come out and hang out for my birthday. So.
And was he stationed?
His family, he was stationed Camp Pendleton.
Okay.
So he was living in Fallbrook at the time. So I was like, all right, great vacation, get to see my best friend, you know, this is fantastic. So I had time out here for about a week and then all of a sudden, uh, I ended up missing my plane to go back to work and my sergeant's like.
Shocker.
Yeah, I know. Right. No, but it was like, ew, my sergeant said, no, don't worry about it. Just take a couple of extra days. So I took another three days here for 10 days, went back. And then that was in February, March, April and May, I ended up leaving my career, bringing my daughter out here and leaving everything behind, which I never thought I'd do. So. My, my, my life changes all the time.
Welcome to California.
I know, right? Uh, but again, it was so different, you know, Fallbrook at that time was, it was, I loved it. It wasn't the city. I just got to the point being a mom, I just, I wanted something different for my daughter. And obviously I loved, I've loved my husband. And so it was just an opportunity, perfect, perfect time and opportunity. So.
Fallbrooks could almost be considered the sticks comparatively speaking to Southern California.
Let me tell you, I'll never remember my first morning that I woke up and I heard a rooster outside of my window and I'm like, where did I move to? Like, what the heck is this place?
Green Acres.
Exactly. It was either, it was from buses and trains and people screaming at each other out my window, which you don't even hear after a while to now roosters and all these animals. So it was a, it was a total culture shock. So it took me some time to get adjusted.
Any consideration of loosely call it lateraling or picking up law enforcement here in California?
I did. So I did. Uh, I was looking at either San Diego or Los Angeles. And then I got pregnant. So that was just not really good timing. And I, again, here I am, big city gal. I just, I want to work in the city. But with my husband being in the Marine Corps, I had to make that decision. Uh, would it be a good idea for me to have to travel from Fallbrook to either San Diego or LA with two kids? And if my husband goes on deployment. So I had to really step down unfortunately from what I always wanted to do. And take that mom position a little bit more. And, uh, so.
How many years did he have left at that point?
Oh, a lot. Like, uh, let's see. My husband did a total of thirty-four and a half years. So I don't even know.
Hated the Marine Corps.
Hated it. No, he was, he was an EOD tech. So he, he blew things up. He did, he says, I did every young boy's dream. Are you kidding me? He loved it. He absolutely loved his job.
You can't make me leave.
And we had those conversations. I was like, ah, no, you should get out. And I am so glad, truly, I'm so glad that he actually listened to himself and not to me about getting out. So there were, there were times where I'm like, I don't know if this is really good for us. I wanted things for myself. Um, but he really put his foot down. I'm so glad he did that because now he has a retirement. He has everything we're needing. And, uh, so yeah, it's, it was a very good move that he stayed in. I was really glad he did.
How does becoming your own business owner come about?
Okay. So at that point in time, so let's see, so moved to, uh, to Fallbrook and obviously didn't get into the police department at the time. I didn't want to get into that. And, uh, so.
Rooster wrangling wasn't a job?
I thought about it. It was like, really? I wasn't good at it. So.
Come here.
I was like, I'll try something different. So, uh, the other thing I wanted to always do was, um, I will, I continued to, uh, do, uh, like training, uh, for classes and things like that, exercise classes. Uh, spinning was my big one. I loved spinning. And, uh, so I ended up getting certified through more classes. And at the same time, I basically created a gym in our backyard or in our garage. And so I started training out of my back, out of, out of our backyard, sometimes out of the garage, neighbors, different people. And so I had a great opportunity to start building up a small business. It wasn't anything huge, but it was small. And it was something that I could sustain being a mom. If my husband, you know, left for deployment, which he ended up doing. Or if we had to move, I could pick up and take it wherever we went to. I just had to get a new client base. So it was wonderful and perfect for what I loved. But at the same time, uh, what we were able to do as a family, as a military family. So.
How big were you able to grow that garage gym business?
So we ended up, after we moved from Fallbrook all over the place, I finally took it to Virginia. And we had a massive, I don't remember the size of, but I think it was about seven or eight hundred square foot, uh, basement. Redid the entire thing and had, uh, all brand new, like I won't call it brand new equipment, but it kind of was. A guy ended up foreclosing on his house. And so it was an estate sale. So I got two gyms worth, uh, worth of stuff.
Wow.
It was phenomenal for like two grand. So I got to fill up the whole place and I worked mainly with women. Uh, sometimes I worked with husbands and wives only together because I just didn't want to work with guys. Uh, sometimes I worked with husbands and wives only together because I just didn't want to work with guys by myself and in my house, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't be a good idea. But I loved it. And then I got into health coaching as well. So I added that as a component.
Now what's health coaching?
So health coaching, think of like life coaching, but with nutrition side to it. So it was actually with, uh, the Institute of Integrated Nutrition. I got certified. So it was about a year certification. And you learned over a hundred and one different dietary theories. And so of course you have to try everything, what works, what doesn't. Uh, you know, you take a look at what's one person's medicine is one person's poison. So it's what is, what does that look like for each client that comes in? So I would create packages for my different clients, whether they just wanted to do the health coaching. Let's incorporate health coaching, personal training, whatever that looked like. So, and then I finally got into herbs as well. So I incorporated all of that in with it as well. So it was, uh, it was really that holistic aspect. I can bring every component into whatever my client was needing.
And how, so has, has basically that just grown to what you're doing today?
That's all closed. That door closed. Uh, once we ended up moving back to California, but once again, I started the business again with Verdant Wellness Studios is what I called it. Uh, I was working with some ladies, just doing the health coaching aspect to it. And then all of a sudden I had, I'm like, well, I've got some free time. How about I start volunteering? So I started volunteering at a pregnancy resource center here in Temecula. And I fell in love with it.
Came back to California, did you go right back to Fallbrook or did you?
No, we actually moved here to Temecula. I knew, I knew exactly where I wanted to go.
Moved up the road to the big city.
Exactly. At this time, we have five kids moving in. And so I wanted to make sure that we had things to do and that we really had a great family atmosphere with every, uh, things to do around, whether it's Costco to make sure we get to that Costco trip and not have to do all the traffic or, you know, soccer and different things, school. So, uh, yeah. So we wanted to make sure we could have, you know, everything in one city rather than in Fallbrook, which is fantastic, but it just wasn't family friendly really. So, um, so we moved back, started my business and just, or just continue my business doing nutrition. Um, I did some aspects of personal training, but just wasn't really huge at that point in time because I was making a lot more money doing the health coaching part at that point in time. Uh, so, uh, so then I ended up going into doing some volunteer work. And I'll never forget during the training, um, was the first time I am ever an appearing, well, second time ever end appearing from the Lord. And he says, you're going to be working here. And I'm like, I'm going to be working here. I have my own job. What are you talking? You know, just thinking to myself, talking and all of a sudden, within a few months, I started working there. They hired me on as a manager and it was nothing I ever wanted to do. I never wanted to work for anybody anymore. I loved having my own business, but this gave me an opportunity to work with, with women in a, in a whole nother perspective on frontline work. So I loved it. I really fell in love with that too.
What, what is the component of that business?
Sure. So, uh, it is a ministry. So it is a pregnancy resource center. It's called Birth Choice. So what we do is we help moms and dads and families who let's say they're in a crisis pregnancy situation. And am I pregnant? What do I do? How do I go upon this? And what we do is we allow them to come in and give them the open space to talk about what they're going through. And give them, you know, direct, not, I don't want to say give them direction, but talk them through their options and allowing them to choose their options. We're always hoping obviously that they keep the baby. But we also give options as well. If they decide not to, they can always come back for counseling and help. But if they do decide to keep the baby, we have an entire area where they can get classes over 400 classes. They can get help with diapers, wipes, formula, food, whatever that looks like, uh, to help them for that first two, two years plus during their, their time with their baby. So.
What immediately comes to my mind with that is how is that entity not more well known?
Isn't that interesting?
Because you think about, even if you're completely squared away with your life and what you think is squared away with your relationship or your marriage. Bringing a baby into the situation is a huge stressor.
Yes.
And you never hear of, hey, you, you, you think you want to go talk to somebody about how you and your spouse are going to handle being parents and what's going to come from being a parent? Regardless if this is a unplanned or planned pregnancy, you're, you're bringing a baby into the world. And then equal to that, if you're considering other options, nobody ever talks about, who did you talk to about it?
Absolutely. And so many people have come to us before where, uh, they've gone to Planned Parenthood or they've gone to some of these, what I call abortion mills. And they're like, why didn't anybody ever tell us the truth of what's going on? You know, they never showed us the monitor of the baby and they never walked us through that because it's a business. That's the difference. All of this outside entity stuff are businesses. They are there to make money. We're there to do ministry and everything we get is through the community. Every dollar we make is through the community or churches. So it's, it's beautiful. There's, we don't have anything to gain from it. You know, it's all about them. It's all about the mom. It's all about the dad and their identity for us in Christ. And if they can know who, who they are, we can save that baby. It's so simple. But you know, people don't want to hear about that unfortunately, which is really, really sad because that baby is a gift and it's a blessing. And I've got five and I know they can be a pain in the neck, but they're so. But they're amazing. Like I just, they're so incredible. And then when we see a mom who may have even gone down a Planned Parenthood and taken that first abortion pill. And then she regretted it. We have an opportunity, she has an opportunity to come to us to possibly reverse that abortion. And, uh, I, I actually got to work with our first, what we call abortion minded mom, AB minded. And, uh, she took the abortion pill reversal pill. And, uh, she actually is, she's holding her baby today. The baby's like four months old. I got to see the baby the other day and I just, it's, she's just in awe. And she, it breaks her heart knowing that she might've never had her son. But because she was able to come to us and we had the, an opportunity to help her, it was just, it was incredible and beautiful.
Is there a network of similar type entities that other people could go find?
Oh, they're, it's huge. They're all over the place. But here in the state of California, they want to shut us down. You know, you get people, um, like A.G. Bonta, who wants to be able to tell us that we're not a true medical clinic. Well, we have medical staff there. So I don't know why we're, you know, we're not, but basically what ends up happening is, is we have a doctor's office inside of our center. And so that is rented out from the doctor. So we are able to send our clients right there on an onsite doctor's office for ultrasound. And, uh, for any extra care or advocacy with that doctor or nurse.
I just, it, like I said, I mean, I've got three of my own and, and got them through, I always jokingly say this, doctors and drugs, but IVF. And one of the things that I've told anybody who will listen since going through that process, especially if you're starting IVF, go to counseling. Because it is going to be such a stressor on your relationship with your spouse.
Absolutely.
And this isn't a thing of, you know, again, like if we've had conversations, this is not about politics. This is just about the fact that you've gotten pregnant. It is a huge piece of your life. You are, you are going down a path that will literally change your life regardless of your decision.
Either way.
And the fact that these resources aren't talked about in just normal conversation blows my mind.
Well, it's interesting because you figure, well, we're a ministry, you'd think the churches would want to jump in and help, right? Or work together. No. They're petrified because we're politics at this point in time to them.
So you, you're kind of in a weird way, you're kind of like a pariah because to the state, your religion.
Yes.
To the religion, your medicine.
Your politics. Yeah, that's exactly.
Wow.
It's really, where we fall into this spot, we get the church's called to help out and do their, their job because of the widows and orphans. These are moms and babies that come in that, I mean, I get women who come in who are human trafficked, domestic violence, single moms, no house. Um, some people who are married, doing great. They just need a little bit of help or maybe they just need some direction because parenting, like you're saying, you need help. So we actually was super.
There's a great manual that you get when you, you know, it's like, you know, you know, when you get a new car and they give you that really nice manual, like here, page sixty four.
It's right there. But what's really neat is about a year or two, about a year, two years ago now, we ended implementing what's called, uh, the fatherhood project. So we have a place for even men to come in and it's like a little man cave. We want to make sure it's manly because everything else is really feminine around. But it's a place for our dads to come in and get help and to just be able to talk and get advice on what that next step is. And, uh, we get every single type of person in there and we love it. And so we have dads who are just prepared to just meet them where they're at and then just kind of raise them up. And it's like iron sharpening iron. How can we help you? What do you need? We have tons of resources for these guys to really be the man that they're called to be to lead their house. And that's what we do. It's, we want to be able to make sure that they are equipped to do what they're called to do. And, uh, it's, it's incredible when I see men come in and then, you know, after time being when our dads, they're, the confidence built up and you know, knowing that they're masculine toxic or that, you know, they're, they're not toxic.
Toxic masculinity.
Exactly. Isn't, that's not true. It's actually, women find that very attractive for the most, you know, most, I think almost all women. But it's important and needed in a home. And I think I look really at the house, the housing today and families. It's, there's not that anymore. Dads aren't taking that role, that mantle that they're called to do. And I'm like, it's just powerful. And it's not that they, um, are any better than women, especially coming from a woman who's done all these masculine type of roles and everything else. I look at my husband, I'm like, you're incredible. You know, he, but he's got a big torch to hold because he's got to lead our family.
Well, this also goes back to what I was saying at the front end of this is that when you, man or woman, choose to bring a child into this world, you have to realize that like it or not, you've chosen a new path for your life. And your first responsibility is always to that child.
Absolutely.
You know, so yes, that we have traditional roles of, you know, and I've, it's interesting because I'll listen to other podcasts and one of the things that they're talking about today is, is that that traditional role of the man being the provider and the caregiver of the family, it's changing largely because men aren't driven to be that way today.
Yes.
And women historically have always wanted up.
Yes.
You make more money than me, you have higher status than me, but today more and more women are the up and the men are the down. So now you're in a weird position of a woman still looking for the man to be and not submissive to him. Just, I'm looking for somebody who's going to care for me, who's going to protect me.
Absolutely.
And they're not finding that.
Right. No, it's very hard. I think, you know, I look at men, they play video games all day or they're on their phones all day. And so they're not stepping into the roles and especially even teaching their sons and their kids about how to step up and do things, how to learn how to fix a car, how to, you know, do things around the house.
Fix the car anymore.
I know. That's true. You got all the, you know, the gear or the, you know, all the electric stuff going on and you can't fix it, but.
I still remember, I'm old enough to have had cars that didn't have computers in them. And I remember one time having a, an alternator issue. And going into an auto parts store because the, I was like, hey, this isn't working. And the guy's like, well, bring me the diagnostic on it. It's like, buddy, my car doesn't have a computer, you know?
It doesn't have that anymore.
I don't have the ability to plug it and tell you what's going on with it, you know?
They can't fix it. It's very different.
And so, yeah, it, just in general, the, the idea of renting on a car anymore, I mean.
Oh, forget about it.
It, you're, you're going to see less and less of it.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. But yeah, I, so that's our goal is really just to give dads the encouragement to step up into the role. And what does that look like? You know, and I mean, it's not going to be perfect and that's okay.
Does the service end after the baby's born? Or do you still offer services to parents post childbirth?
Questions. So we end up serving, uh, that mom from the point that she's pregnant all the way up until two and a half, and in some cases, three years old. But then we want to be able to send her off into get other resources and help. So it's not just, our, our biggest thing is, is don't mistake me. I believe truly there are points in our lives where we need handouts. I've been there. We all, a lot of times we've been there and that's okay. That's okay.
Not necessarily a handout, but a hand.
Well, sometimes I look at it and I, I see what you're saying, but it's like, you know, sometimes people will, um, lose their job. Things like that. Maybe they just, they need to get their first month or their, you know, their next month paid for rent. And I just don't believe it has to come from the government. And I don't believe it should come from the government. I believe that's where the community and the churches come in. And that's really where a lot of things started getting twisted, where power started coming from the government rather than from the people. And so for me, we want to be able to see, can we involve the churches? Can we involve the individuals to be able to help out with these people? But at the same time, not only are we giving these people the handouts that they need, but we're also raising them up so that way they can support themselves. So they can do classes, anything from parenting to how to buy a car, how to save money, uh, budgeting, you know, all these different ideas and, and different ways to educate themselves to get them to that next level rather than just sitting there and can I have this? Can I have a new phone? Can you, you know, this is, that's not what we're here called to do. Uh, especially, you know, me being in city council, that is not my role as a city councilwoman to do that. So I, I find it really important that we empower and encourage the people to do their job, not empower, encourage government. So.
The only reason why I say a hand as opposed to a handout, because I go back to what we both learned, you in the Marine Corps and then in NYPD and me and my time in law enforcement is when you're struggling to get over an obstacle, somebody may reach down a hand, but what you're seeing is they're doing what you're trying to achieve.
I love that.
It's not simply, uh, oh man, I'm struggling to get over this obstacle. Okay. Here's a step stool. Go over. No, the person putting their hand back is still showing you that we got to get over this obstacle that I'm doing it with you is what I mean.
I love that. You know, so that's the first time I've ever heard that before. And I really liked that analogy.
So that's, that's my only thing when I say a hand as opposed to a hand, because there are some people that are looking for the hand out. What are you, what are you going to give me for, you just, I just, I don't want, you know, but there are some of those people who, because I was just having another conversation today, because there are some people who they get themselves into a worse situation because of pride. Because they're too, they're too prideful to say, I just need this hand over this obstacle.
Yes, absolutely.
Because if they, if they could just get over this obstacle, they'll be back fine. They'll be able to reset and keep moving forward. It's when they stand behind this obstacle, I can't get, I'm not going to ask for help. I'm not going to ask for help. Well, what's happening is more obstacles are being built. So you're going to get over this one. Now you've just got more in front of you.
That's exactly it. And that's what happens. And then it turns into that hamster wheel or they continue to just cycle over and over and over. And that, then they're having to ask for that all the time because there's no other option. So.
Is your organization a nonprofit? Where's the funding source?
It's nonprofit. So we only take from the community. That's it. If we, we have learned very early on and, uh, our CEO is incredible, uh, just amazing woman. And, uh, she has showed us early on really well that it is not a good idea to take from the government, only because there's always strings attached. So the minute that we take something from usually county, uh, the state or federal, uh, money, there's always something that, oh, well, you have to service these people. You can't say that over there. But we're like, well, we're a Christian ministry and we're going to say it. So to not take the funding, uh, is harder because, you know, we sometimes just skate by that day and you know, it's like sometimes just finding that change in the couch and we make payment, but, uh, it always comes through every single time. And then sometimes it's just abundantly clear that we've got a lot of money and things are good that month, you know? So, but all of our donations come also, even tangible donations come in from the community as well.
For somebody wanting to help your organization, is it strictly financial or is there the volunteer component?
There's all different levels. So it's everything from hands and feet, we call it. So volunteering, uh, there, there's prayer groups that we have. We also have, obviously the funding is a big component of it. And just connecting with the churches a lot. That's our biggest thing we're working right now is trying to create and mend those relationships with pastors. Because maybe they don't understand, maybe, uh, they're kind of scared to get into this area just because they don't know. And it's this, this, we really look at this as frontline work and on the spiritual level. And so I think that's why for me, I look at all my previous training. And it just, it comes right into play just so beautifully and perfectly with what I do on a daily basis when we're looking at the life of a child being possibly taken. You know, and, uh, we get to look at these kids, these moms and just love on them. And just give them everything that we can to just love, uh, tell them, hey, we're going to be here for you. And you know, there's other options too. There's adoption. That's, you know, there's plenty of other parents who want to raise kids. So, uh, there's lots of different ways that we can help moms and dads through situations.
Were you doing this during COVID?
Uh, yes. I actually started volunteering in 2020. So, um, we started, we had about, let me see, twenty, twenty-five volunteers before I showed up. And we were down to two, and then I was the third one that came in. So it was, uh, a lot less, well, it was just the work was different. So.
Were you able to be clarified or classified as essential?
We, yes, we stayed open. We stayed open. So we, we didn't care. We stayed open either way. And Chad Bianco here, he wasn't shutting anything down anyway. So you know, that's why I love working under, you know, having him as our sheriff because we're not getting closed.
Well, we were, we were actually in a weird little bubble because we had, what I mean by that is my, my, my wife and I are basically based here. We were in Riverside County. So there was never a concern for us related to any of the mandates.
Yes. Okay.
Unless we went to visit family in LA County, you know?
Totally different.
And then you get out there and all of a sudden, wait, we can't go to a restaurant, you know? But on the flip side, we were even more benefited because we had the casino right in our backyard. So they stayed open the entire time. So we had access to restaurants. So and the huge perk was because of the masks, they shut down all the smoking in the casino. So you could walk through the casino like, this is nice. So we, we were in an awkward little bubble that when we left Temecula or we left Riverside County, you're all of a sudden you're like, oh.
It was like a whole nother world, wasn't it? Yes.
So it was, it was kind of different.
Yes, absolutely. No, it was, uh, no, we were a mask free zone. If they wanted to wear them, they'd wear them. Um, yeah, we just, we just want to serve our girls and make sure that they were getting the help they were needing. So.
I'll be sure to put it in the show notes, but what's the name of your organization and what's your website?
Birth Choice Center. So we have one in Temecula, in Hemet, Lake Elsinore, and then we have a mom and baby boutique and then a, um, Birth Choice Center. So we have one in Temecula, in Hemet, Lake Elsinore, and then we have a mom and baby boutique and then a, an RV. So.
And you have a website?
We do.
Associated with it?
So Friends of BCC for donors and then just birthchoice.com. So, yes.
So let's transition into politics.
What?
The favorite topic. You're already a city council person and you're running for reelection.
Yes.
So first, what motivates you to want to do that?
So you really, you really want to know? I'm gonna give you the real story.
Well, I'll put it this way. What do you want your voters to know?
Well, I only.
Because I'll just, I, I got the opportunity to talk to Larry Turner, who's running for mayor of San Diego. And I'm not trying to make this a politics based podcast. It is about the transition. It just so happens that I, I think that we're getting to a point where more and more veterans and first responders are kind of like, hey, I'm tired of sitting on the sideline. I want to step, put my foot in that pool. But he flat out said, he goes, I don't want to do this, but nobody else is stepping up to do it.
Interesting. Isn't that interesting? Well, I'll tell you, so four, four and a half years ago, a little bit, maybe a little bit of four years, three months, whatever. I got a text message from a teacher who was one of my, from one of my kids and hey, there's this position for city council that this lady is going after. She's completely not what our city is needing, completely opposite views, very progressive and very aggressive. And so she's like, what would you think if we ended, if you ran for city council? And so I told her, I was like, what the heck, city council? Like, I don't, I don't know politics. I don't know government. I, you know, vote, I do this, that. That's about all I do. I got my business and my kids and my husband. So I kind of looked at it for about a split second and then called up a friend of mine who was a pastor. And I said, hey, Cal, what would you think if, you know, maybe you ran for this position now? Cal was a former marine. He is a former pastor. He was teaching at Linfield. Older guy. I'm like, he'd be great. You know, he could definitely do this. And he basically texts me back. He says, how about you pray about it? And I'm like, what, what is going on? Like, this is not my thing. So I talked to my husband a little bit about it. And I'll never forget, he was heading out the door in uniform. And it was just a weird thing that he had said to me. He, I told him, you know, I just don't think that this is for me. Politics is just not a thing for me. I don't know anything about it. And he turned around and he just says, but you know Spanish, don't forget that. And I'm like, and it just hit me that I can connect with an entire other entity of people in the community that maybe other people can't because of, you know, how being bilingual. That's just where my brain went to. So I actually went at that point in time, I was still volunteering. I think I was volunteering or maybe I just started work at, at Birth Choice. I don't know which one it was at that point in time. But I went and talked to the manager and I was talking, I was like, yeah, I think I might try this thing route for city council. And she goes, what? I go, yeah, I said, there's this position or something for city council. Well, I don't know anything about it, but I'm gonna look into it. And she said, well, Jeanette and Mike Nigar, who's the current city councilman, is looking for somebody right now. Now Jeanette is the CEO of Birth Choice. Now, mind you that the lady I was talking to is not into politics, not in any of that. She wants to stay as far as she can from it. Says, you need to call Jeanette. So I called her and I said, hey, I was like, I, I think I'm gonna try and run for this thing. I don't know. She goes, are you in district two? I said, yeah. She goes, you need to get out tonight. We're gonna get you started. So all of a sudden, I end up going out to what's called Hour Watch at that point in time, which was at this church called 412. And I was going to Reliance. And so I went, I met all these people. It was a lot of politics. It was separate from the church, but it was just this big group of people. I got to meet all these people and all of a sudden the floodgates opened up. Everyone's like, you'd be great, da, da, da. And that was it. And all of a sudden, things just, doors were opening. Donations were coming in. I was learning. My husband was teaching me all about this government thing and people just continue to educate me along the way. I continued to just dig in, figure out what I had to do and it was an incredible win. Like, it was beautiful. So that's how I got in. So nothing I ever dreamt about. Like, oh, I want to be a politician. It was just, again, kind of like him, there was a need. And there was somebody who was gonna come in, who would absolutely have destroyed our city with their type of agenda. And I think people obviously know I'm a conservative and I'm definitely a defender for the people and I stand up for truth. And so I think people have known that about me and they just saw the writing on the wall with this individual. And actually we had another guy come in who was leading a BLM movement at the time here in Temecula as well. The guy was like 20 years old. He's from New York. And.
Those New Yorkers.
Oh, man, they're, they're just so disruptive, right?
Take them all, go away.
So, but I remember it was actually November 5th of last year, November, whatever, election day. He and I actually sat down and we talked and it was, you know, we got to have the conversation, but me and the other lady, Alicia, it was definitely a battle through the whole way. And praise God, I ended up coming up, you know, victorious on it. So it was good.
How was that experience or the first experience or just the experience in general of getting in front of people and going, this is who I am and this is what I'm about?
So challenging. It was one of the hardest things I had to really do. I'm not the greatest speaker, but I have passion. And I think people see that passion through me and they're like, there's something very interesting about her. And I had a friend of mine, Bob, and he's like, you just got, you got the fire in the belly, kid. You just, you have it. And there is, there's a certain calling and there's a certain, I don't want to say criteria, but I've learned to not fit their mold. But I've been able to become more polished over the years. And I think it's done me really well to always just stand really, really firm in what I believe. If there's anything, I think a lot of the council and the city says, it's like, she doesn't budge. And, and I don't, unless it's something that's needed or something that could be, you know, moved around. But for the most part, when we're talking about certain topics or ideologies, it just is what it is, is black and white for me and, and that is it. So.
What's been your experience with what I call the business of politics and being a politician and being an elected, in an elected position and really kind of avoiding the negative aspect of it?
I don't play the game. I think that's what makes it so easy. I'm just me. You either like me or you don't. But really what it comes down to, it's not about me. It's about what the goal is that we're trying to get to. You know, I've had for the last almost three and a half years, it's been a battle zone at my dais. Literally information has gone throughout the entire nation about what's going on in Temecula. And it started with me at city council. And then we ended up moving over to school board. So we ended up having a little bit of a break. But it's been interesting because once we got rid of the social justice issues off of the dais, because that was the main problem of what we were dealing with. And I wasn't gonna kowtow, you know, just basically bow down to that. And I said, you know, listen, we're human beings. We're all gonna be treated equal. People don't actually like that. So without my problem. But when that ended up getting moved aside to a commission, all of a sudden, it was like heaven's doors open up and we've been able to get work done, which is great. So this last eight months, myself and my, my other city council members have had a really good time working together, growing together and getting city business done. Because we've had to, had the, or we've had the opportunity to let all this other stuff go and not look at it and not deal with it.
I think one of the things that, especially in the times that we're in now, that if I could allow more people the experience of going through the academy or going through military, you know, bootcamp, basic training, is realizing that you're not special. And, and actually have somebody tell you, you're all pieces of garbage and I'm gonna treat you all the same way. And nobody's getting anything special and realizing that, you know what? The world doesn't revolve around you. And you have a responsibility to your left and to your right as much as to yourself.
Yes, a hundred percent. And you know, I had a vision about four years ago. It was, it was really interesting. I, I get, it's my gifting. I get visions in my dreams and had this vision of this wall and it was just leaning down.
Six numbers coming up that you might.
No, not that one. But there was, the wall was just leaning down just a little bit. And I was holding, it was this massive, massive wall. And I was holding it up and there were people on that wall with me. I'll never forget, but they would come on and off. So it would be like, it was, some of them had, that was their job or their mission for a little while. And then somebody would replace them and then they'd go somewhere else to have to work. But I believe that the Lord was giving me an understanding that this is where I'm supposed to be. I'm supposed to hold back the evil and all of this that is coming at the city with and alongside, shoulder to shoulder with the men and women that are called at that moment to continue to hold up that wall. And as I've seen over the last four years, that's exactly what has happened. I've had wonder, and some people have stayed on that wall with me. And that was part of the vision, that some people would stay and some people would leave. And that's exactly what it's been. It's been a great experience. My learning, it was like drinking from three, four, five fire hydrants when I first started. And I'm down to maybe like two, you know, but there's so much information and there's so much to learn and there's so much changing. But we have a really, we really have a great team at the city. I've learned to lean on them when I need to and we have great relationships. My city manager and myself have really been able to develop our relationship, which is really important as well, which if he ever does listen to this, it wasn't always the most beautiful. But we have had the opportunity to figure out how to make it work. And now it's, we can have great conversations and get things done. And so we can see the difference in the city. We really, really can as it grows.
Well, good, better and different, you've chose to throw your hat in the ring again for another term. Before I ask the question, I'm gonna make a comment.
Sure.
Not being somebody who partakes in politics or really kind of dives deep into it, but one of, one of the things I will always say is, is that I like the idea of term limits, not this idea of lifelong politicians.
Right.
But the flip side to that is for those who are in it for the right reasons and you start creating momentum of good change, positive change, whatever it is, it, and of course, the other side of the fence is gonna be saying that you're creating negative change because you're never gonna make everybody happy.
For sure.
But for your mission, what you feel you need to accomplish, you're making that motivation. And when I say you, I'm saying anybody in your position. That's gotta be a weird thing to then go, all right, I'm done. See ya.
Right.
You know, it, you, it really then becomes the, man, if I don't run, who's gonna keep this going? And then you find yourself, shit, now I can't, now I cannot do this. So it's, it's a weird dichotomy that you put yourself in, in that, man, I don't know anything about this, but I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna do the best job I can and, and try to accomplish what I feel is right in my heart. And then if you start seeing that momentum, oh, man, well, okay, I guess I'm doing this again.
Right, right. No, it's a, it's a great question and it is, actually, I'll go back a couple of years. I actually ended up bringing up term limits. I was the first city councilwoman to ever, or member in general, to ever have brought that up to the dais. And what's very interesting is, is I got a ton of pushback from previous council members. But everybody else was excited about it. They're like, this is great. We don't want to have the old, you know, the old boys club. And so for me, it was just something important. It's like, hey, listen, serve and give somebody else the opportunity to serve. Cause I look at what my gifts, talents and strengths are. Somebody has more and other things. Why don't I give them an opportunity to come in and, and use them as well? So I had brought it up and since everything was so, such a challenge, I, anything I did, I couldn't pass. They just, they literally walled me up and didn't let me do anything. So they said, no, no to term limits. And then we had another gentleman who was a definite conservative come in. And then he asked for them and then they gave it to him, which I thought was hilarious. I was like, are you serious? Really? So anyways, so it didn't even matter as long as it got in. So actually it's on the ballot right now. It's called Measure M. And I'm hoping everybody is going to check that box because we don't need more Pelosi's. I don't need somebody who's 80, 90 years old running in this position thinking that they're it. You know, thinking of, like, think about it this way, in the military or the police, when somebody retires, there's gonna be somebody that steps up into that position, you know? And we have to remember, especially for myself, I am not the only person who could do that job. You know, other people are called to do that. And so if I'm in the way, then I am not allowing the opportunity for somebody else to come in and do really great work in there. So I just have to have faith and understanding that when my time is done, my time's done.
I almost think of it when I try to wrap my brain around a way to address it, it's kind of like trying to fight an octopus.
Okay.
And what I mean by that is, so go back to your time in the Marine Corps.
Right.
Who, and I know this is a rhetorical question, but who ran the Marine Corps? The senior NCOs.
Right.
The new, new officer comes in, go talk to the senior NCO, figure out how the, how we do shit around here.
Exactly.
And you relied on that knowledge and that experience and you wanted those old timers in those positions.
Right.
Especially when the shit hits the fan.
Right.
Okay. Cause they've been there, they've done that and they know how to get it done.
For sure.
So there's that aspect of it when you relate it to politics. There is something to, somebody who's been in it long enough that understands how to maneuver within it, work the relationships, all that kind of stuff.
Sure.
Then you go to the other side of it. Those of us on the outside go, we don't need, you know, lifetime. It's, it's like, there's no right answer because there's a positive and a negative for everything.
Right.
The one thing you did say though, that I firmly believe, there needs to be an age limit. I'm sorry.
Really?
There, there.
I agree.
And I know that they all say that, oh, you know, 20 is the new 12 and 60 is the new, I get it. But there comes a point in time where just go be the old person.
Yeah.
And I know this is age discrimination, but if you're 70 years old, I don't care how spry and with it you are, you don't need to be in public office. That's just my opinion.
It is very challenging.
The same way we have a bottom end, you gotta be X number of age to come into it. We need to have a top end for politics.
Well, and it's interesting with this.
Politicians.
Politician. Yeah. Well, especially for the city, I look at it and we, we were trying to decide, do we want to do eight years, 12 years term limits? And initially, my initial goal was let's do, just do two terms. So that's eight years. And listening to their councils, council members, we extended it actually this time till 12. So Marietta, Marietta has eight. We do 12 years because honestly, your first four years, you're just getting, you're just figuring out, you're figuring out the foundation. Your second four years, you're coming into my understanding, Lord willing, if I get in, it's really, now you start to make the change, you know? And then after that, you get to really implement that change after that. And so that's something, I don't know if I'm gonna go anything after this. I haven't been called yet to do it. I just want to get past November 5th, you know, and see what happens. But I will say, I love, again, everything I do, I love. I really, I don't ever step into anything. I've never had a job or a career where I'm like, I guess I gotta go there, you know? I guess I'll go to that job. I love everything I do because I'm very passionate about what I do and it shows. So if I get elected again, I'm just excited to get back in and serve the people. Lot of new ideas coming down the pathway. I'll give you an example. This is a perfect example. Today I had an opportunity to talk to a group of people who have, who are deaf. And they're looking for an opportunity to be able to come in more with the city and get help. And so that way they can be a part of the community. And I'm like, why is, why is this gap here? We need to fill the gap. Let's, how can we work together? And you know, honestly, I, I look at things like DEI and I don't agree with it. But old school diversity, inclusion and equality for me is what it's all about. And so if we have this group that is needing something, and let's help them out, you know, we have that opportunity. So I I don't agree with this whole new age type of thinking, but I know growing up, I absolutely love diversity. I was all about including everybody. And, and all about equality, you know? So it's, it's interesting how to work things right now as these, this new type of terminology, this new type of terminology is coming to, to the, to the top and just trying to work it all out and work with people. It's very different thinking for them.
It almost seems like just creating a name seems more important than what's the objective of what the name means.
Exactly, exactly. Instead of saying, oh, there's, there's people who need help. Let's just say we help these people. Let's just say we do this stuff. No, let's, let's actually get our hands dirty and work with people and stuff like that. And actually think outside the box and work with these people. So I'm, I'm, I love doing things like that. I love getting in the community. For me, obviously my two areas that I'm really passionate about with, within cities, public safety, community services for me is a real big area. But now I'm learning all this stuff about building and development and it's just, there's, it's great to have all this knowledge and what can we do with it? How can we work with different businesses? How can we work with families to be able to start new businesses? You know, especially with veterans, how, you know, we got veterans coming in, they want to start a business. Well, we have opportunities for them here in Temecula. Not every city does. And so be, and I was a part of that, being able to help get these men and women in, who've started in small businesses to build them up. So that way they can eventually get their own brick and mortar and, and move forward. So I love these opportunities to do this with the public and everything else that we get to do. Yeah, it's great. It's fun. But I, day to day, I just, I love being with the community.
From personal side, what's the big development going on on the west side of the 15 freeway?
For that.
Up on the hillside.
Up on the hillside. So what is gonna be up, all single families up there? That's the All-Terr project. So that has actually been in the works for 20 years.
Just, I see them starting to grate and everything like, that looks like a massive project.
Massive project. I, I always just tell people, I didn't do it, but you know, but it was just, but it's, it's gonna be interesting.
The idea of more traffic in Temecula. It just, it, it excites me.
Right? Well, this is one of the things actually over the years that I've been fighting against, not just traffic, but the fact that the state continuously puts their boot on our face, mandating us to do stuff that doesn't work for our city. And again, we're seeing it with traffic. We're seeing it with just too much high density housing. Nobody wants it. I don't care what side of the aisle you're on, nobody wants it. Nobody wants. Nobody wants to sit there in traffic for half an hour, two hours, three hours, just to get back and forth to work.
And playing devil's advocate though.
Sure.
There's a lot of traffic in three lanes of traffic that aren't necessarily just going to Temecula. It's the only artery through the area.
Yes.
That it, you know, and so there, there's a big portion that's just a lot of cars on the road, but man, it's frustrating.
Well, this is interesting. So I learned this four years ago is it goes all the way back down to San Diego, you know, and we see the traffic. But the bottleneck area is actually right there at the French Valley area. So because cars want to go from the right lane, over to the left side and vice versa. You know, and you're like, uh, and so that's what clogs it all the way back. So all of these different phases on the I-15 that we're doing right now has been great. We have five phases that we're going to, we're just finishing up two, going into three, but.
Don't you love that sensation going northbound? All of a sudden you cross the 215, you're like, where do all the cars go?
Well, this is what's interesting is we just end up getting through with the county board supervisors. And they're wanting to basically add an entire new city up near the Winchester area, which will add over the next 20, some odd years, about 200 and 3,000 people. And we're like, where are you putting all those people with traffic and, you know, cars and everything else? And, uh, so that's been our, our last biggest battle that we've been working on right now is let's have a seat at the table to talk about that, rather than you guys are just going to push it on us. And now Temecula, Marietta, the entire region is having to deal with this traffic issue that is already here and hasn't been dealt with yet. So traffic, traffic's horrible. I see New York, DC, I just feel like I always go to these big traffic areas. I get stuck in them. So.
One of my best friends lives in South Carolina and he was out here for my wedding and we left, we got married in Camarillo.
Okay.
And we were leaving Camarillo to come back here to Temecula, you know, doing a run. We left Camarillo at almost 10 o'clock at night. And I remember him looking at me going, where are all these people going? Because this is as much traffic in South Carolina at rush hour. And you guys, it's, it's nine 30, 10 o'clock at night. And it's like, that's just Southern California.
Yes.
It doesn't matter. It's gotten to the point, it does not matter what day of the week, what time of the day. If you're going anywhere distance, you're going to hit some traffic.
A hundred percent.
It may, it may never be stop and go.
Right.
But you're going to definitely be slowing down. It's not like you're going to set cruise and go from A to B.
No, not at all. No, just no, no cruise control. Keep going. Yeah, no, none of that, none of that.
What advice would you give for somebody? Well, two-part question. First part is, what was the biggest thing you learned now that you've got in, you know, so like with your first election, getting into politics, coming into your second one? And what advice would you give for somebody who's thinking about getting into it?
So are you saying from which aspect of transitioning, the election part or just in general?
You, somebody's interested in running for city council. What did you, what's the biggest thing you learned getting, going through that first election process and being involved in it?
Just be you. You know, I think the biggest thing is just don't waver. I always look at those people who are like the shifting sand and they move with the, the wind and they're not respected by anybody and they're being used as a tool. And so I just let everybody know, you know, stand in your morals and values when you come in and you have a certain perspective. It's one thing to grow off of that, but don't just change because somebody, you know, wants to be your friend or somebody had, will give you something. It just, it doesn't work. And so those people are never respected. I can just share for, for my own personal experience. It never mattered what people thought about me. It was, is it right or wrong? And so that's the other part is just, just stay true to yourself, be honest, uh, the entire way through. And I, I really, I see the difference from year one, because I never budged and how I was in arguments and fighting constantly to now I look four years later, and now we're having amazing conversations that I never thought would have happened ever. So.
Have you been able to buffer your family from it or has there been any?
Oh yeah. Oh, my, my, well, my husband, my husband's a warrior too. So him being in the Marine Corps, you know, 34 and a half years, he's actually a stay at home dad right now, um, homeschooling our kids. And so that's just, that's another battle zone in itself. He's like, I'd rather be on deployment than doing this.
What'd you do, Dave? Blew up stuff in the backyard with dad?
Yeah, I know. Right. He told me he should. Um, but, uh, no, we, we've been good. Like my, my whole family helps out, especially on this last election. My entire family has been involved. I mean, they always have been from the beginning, but now I've got older kids and my daughter is doing my social media. My son's helping with videos. My husband helps to write because he's a lot better writer than I am. Uh, and then my kids, they just, they just watch and observe or we go to different things. So it's really great to have that family bond. Would it, I, I would love to have more of it, but sometimes it's just so hard because it's, you know, city councilwoman, uh, center director now of two, of two centers. Um, you know, mom of five, and then now doing an election. And I told my family, I'm like, I'm on deployment till November 5th. Sorry. You know, so that's been my thing. Any, any of my kids are like, how much longer? I'm like, deployment till November 5th, 12 days, you know? So.
Well, and what a lot of people don't realize is city council meetings can go late.
Yes, yes. And I, I was, I had one city council meeting that went almost, it was a second latest. I think it was till about two in the morning. So, uh, yeah. And then my husband watches. He's been very supportive. He's been really, really supportive. Um, he's probably one of my biggest cheerleaders, to be honest with you. I just love having him by my side. And he's like, I watched the city council. Did you see that person? And so it, it gives us something to talk to, to talk about as well, you know, and just brings really good discussion and with the two of us. So.
So going back to the transition component and incorporating your experience running for city council and being involved in a, in a city. Any advice, last pieces of advice?
To, not, go ahead.
Towards that, the veteran or, you know, for me, you've, you've had the opportunity to transition from two, both of these careers, both the veteran and first responder community.
Absolutely.
And, and basically kind of re-envisioning yourself and, and finding the new mission and the new purpose. So just kind of in wrapping it up, any last pieces of advice?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's interesting. I think you had touched on it earlier in the interview when we were talking is we're seeing more and more first responders and military step up than ever before. And I think that's such a good thing because we have the ability to stand up where sometimes people would cower. We have strength and, uh, the ability to look at something and go, no to it, or say, I'm not budging. And so if any of these men or women feel that they are being called into this, and I, I honestly would say anything we do is a calling. But if they're feeling called into this type of position, uh, number one, I say pray about it because you really want to make sure you're doing the right thing. But if not, when you get in there, just give it all you got. Give it everything and just stand firm because like I said, so many people cower. And when I look at veterans and I look at police officers and first responders, they've already been trained up as warriors to stand up against this stuff. It's just they've got to know that internally about themselves to just go, yeah, I gotta do the right thing. They already, it's, it's in them already. So I just want to encourage more first responders. We actually, you interviewed George, uh, was it last week? And we have, uh, this veteran coalition that we didn't put together. It just kind of organically happened. And so there's four veterans, uh, three, three Marines, Ora and one army guy. And we know it's, it's always a little battle there just in, you know, with our services, but we're just, we're solid. We think alike, um, we move alike, we dynamically think, uh, you know, strategy and it, we're a team. And so if anything as well, if there's people that you know, that you can collaborate with, that are solid or think like you definitely do. Because during that election time, it really helps to get through that process and during those times where you're like exhausted. And now we're just having a lot of fun doing it. So, you know, we're down to less than two weeks and we're just having a blast during election time. We're like, let's just have fun. So, yeah.
Well, I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
You know, the, hoping the elections end up the way you want them and that you, what I see from you is like you said, somebody who's grounded, somebody who has themselves identified and I'm, and not allowing or not letting the sands shift you. And just standing tall in it. So I wish you the best and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here, letting me be here.
I appreciate you watching, but before you go, if you liked the video, please hit that subscribe button. Also, any comments are appreciated. Thank you.